Good evening. The November 21st, 2024 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Won't you please join me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. For purposes of our roll call, in attendance in person, we have trustees Mitchell Cross, Ratan Hamel, and Smith Everett. And Valerie, are you joining us on the phone?
I am here.
Okay. With that, I believe everyone's in attendance, and so we'll move ahead with the agenda. First up is awards and recognition, and of course, our favorite part of the board meeting, the Student Spotlight. So, Dr. Corp?
So, I get to introduce tonight Eric Freel. And so, we are really happy to have him and have him share a bit about his story and give you a chance to get to know him. So, Eric, if you would come up.
Madam President, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. As she stated, my name is Eric Freel. I am a student veteran here at Johnson County Community College. This is my first semester back at school since I attended here briefly in 2013. I'm originally from West Virginia by way of Indiana in the United States Air Force. My dad was in the Air Force for 17 years, so I was raised predominantly by the government. I come from a family, a very large family, with a variety of veterans who have served in just about every branch of service continually since World War II. Motivated by the stories I heard as a child growing up, when I became of age, I felt it was my turn to enlist and do my part in the U.S. Army in 1999. I served a total of 13 years as an infantryman, and I was deployed overseas twice in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom. In April of 2007, I was injured by an improvised explosive device during my second deployment. Excuse me. It caused numerous severe traumatic brain injuries, which left me with a minimal level of brain damage that resulted in short-term memory loss and motor control function issues. I spent the last four years of my military service going through extensive medical rehabilitation and cognitive therapy. During that time, I somehow managed to meet a wonderful woman who is currently my wife, and we have been married now for 12 years and have an 11-year-old daughter who's going on 22. My return to school was driven by a need to finish what I had started initially in 2013 after I was medically retired. I'm hoping to pursue a career that will allow me to achieve success within the limits of my disabilities. During that time of rehabilitation, I was introduced to a type of therapy by a cognitive therapist that involved the use of ironically video games, predominantly one that forced you to use all of your senses in order to play. As I've gotten older and things in life have begun to change, I decided to try to focus on an area of education that would allow me to maybe further that endeavor in utilizing unconventional technology to provide therapy to veterans and patients suffering with severe anxiety and post-traumatic stress. I'm currently in the video game development program here at school, and I'm hoping to focus on virtual reality technologies. Virtual reality technology in and of itself is not a new thing, but its use in therapy in the last couple of years has grown exponentially. Quite a few large entities, the Veterans Affairs, Brown University, and I believe the University of Central Florida, are exploring the use of virtual reality immersion therapy extensively and have made significant advancements in that area in the last two years. I'm hoping to focus my education in that direction based on the amount of time I spent dealing with my own therapy and my own struggles, to take this education and go forward and help advance that direction that that is going. More often than not, veteran students returning to school will run into a significant number of unexpected challenges. School in and of itself can be difficult, and I think if I can do anything to help relieve some of those difficulties for not only my fellow veterans but other students, I would consider that quite a success. Currently, I am maintaining a 4.0 GPA. I'm hoping to continue to maintain that GPA as I go forward and things become more difficult. But that is a goal that I will see if I can achieve. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for your service. We're so grateful to veterans like yourself. All of us, all of us who live this life in what we call America are so grateful. With that, I'll open it up to questions. Trustee Ratan.
Thank you. Boy, it brings me so much joy to see a non-traditional student come to school with a laser-focused mission. That just gives me chills that you have taken your life experience, and now you want to go help others, you want to further this therapy. You have it so clear that I hope you meet and exceed your goals and continue on, and everything you envision and even more happens. Also, thank you because I learned something about the virtual reality and therapy and video game therapy that I'd never heard about. So, thanks for coming back to school, thanks for your service, thanks for educating us tonight, and thanks for having such a great mission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Smith Everett.
Yeah, I would echo thank you for your service and thank you for choosing us at JCC. I hope we meet all of your expectations. I love, as trustee Ratan said, your high goals and mission for yourself. I was just curious to know if you feel that the veteran program here at JCC has helped your endeavors, has helped you in those struggles. We've heard from veterans over the years that it's not the things you plan for that end up popping up for veteran students, it's those unplanned things that can really be roadblocks, and I wondered if you feel supported.
Definitely. When I first attended school here in 2013, the Veteran's Service Program as it exists today didn't exist. So, when I returned to school, it was a very welcome surprise to find such a level of support as what is provided by the staff up in that office.
Awesome. Glad to hear it. Thank you so much, and very good luck. I can't wait to read about you in a magazine someday when we hear about the great development you're making.
We can hope.
I'll just add to all that. First of all, as a fellow veteran, I know all too well that TBI and PTSD are high mountains to climb. And congratulations to you not only for climbing those mountains, but for paying back in your own way the things that helped you get here. And I certainly wish you the best of success. You know, the Veterans Program is something we're really proud of here at JCC. As you know, veterans face very unique challenges. The transition from military life to civilian life is very difficult, and I think people who have never served in that way sometimes don't understand the complexity of that. And so, I'm glad that it's working for you. It's always wonderful to hear great stories about how successful our programs are being for our students. So, again, thank you for your service. Gosh, we wish you the best success, and thank you so much for everything you're doing. And like my fellow trustee Laura, we're going to read about you someday, and I look forward to that. So, thanks, Eric. Thanks so much. Next on the agenda is the Open Forum, the Open Forum section of the board. Agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one Open Forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled board meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. There are three registered speakers at tonight's meeting. You will be called to the podium in the order of your registration, and prior to beginning any comments, we ask that you state your name, city, and state of residence. And first up is Cherie Leicher. You didn't want to be first, right?
I'm Cherie Leicher, Shawnee, Kansas. Trustees, I am Professor Cherie Leicher, Department Chair of the JCC Business Office Technology Department, hereafter referred to as BOT. Tonight in your consent agenda, you are being asked to vote to deactivate the BOT certificates and degree and to close the BOT program. At the faculty meeting in August 2023 during the Q&amp;A session for Doctors McLeod and Singh, a question was asked about the closing of cosmetology and what other programs were being considered for closing. Dr. McLeod announced that the BOT program was being considered. This was the first time I had heard this information. A few weeks after Dr. McLeod's announcement, I met with him. He had no definitive plan, just some ideas about revitalization. That was the last conversation I had with him. I worked through the rest of that academic year with my advisory board and my dean to plan program and course modifications. After the spring 2024 semester ended, I asked my dean to get an update from Dr. McLeod regarding BOT before I started extensive work on revitalizing. It's a good thing I asked. The response was quick and decisive. JCC is closing the BOT program with no further opportunity to revitalize. In my opening statement at the September 2024 Educational Affairs Committee, I presented the deactivation proposals and said that I did not want to do this. I also asked why there is no structured revitalization plan for struggling programs. No answer was given. After some discussion, a motion was made to deactivate, but the motion failed. You will be told that the data shows low enrollment for the past several years. I do not deny this. This program has been slow to recover from the pandemic. However, this semester enrollment has finally started to increase. Since this past spring, I have welcomed 70 new majors to the program. I wonder how much more enrollment might have increased if BOT was marketed. In the past, struggling programs were offered a helping hand. When BOT had help back in the 2000s in the form of targeted marketing, it brought in more students. Administration has stated several times that people simply do not know about all the programs we offer, so why does the problem continue? According to the Kansas Department of Labor Statistics, the list of high-demand occupations for 2024 is based on three measures: current job openings, projected job openings over the next two years, and projected job openings over the next 10 years. The occupations of administrative assistant and medical administrative assistant are included on that list. The data also includes high-demand, high-wage occupations requiring less than a bachelor's degree. The occupation of executive administrative assistant ranks in the top 10 for high demand and high wage. The need for administrative professionals is real and documented. JCC should capitalize on this demand. Unfortunately, the decision to close fits into a sad, familiar narrative of administrative professionals as replaceable, abused by their supervisors, and generally not very smart. Illustrated by a comment said to me a few years ago that what I teach, and I quote, "isn't rocket science." I'm here tonight to put into practice what they have told my students to do: fight against that stereotype. I teach a business office procedures course. We live and work by procedures. JCC has many of them, but as near as I or my colleagues can tell, sorry, no written procedures exist for revitalizing programs. Do we even know what that means? Is it just modifying the curriculum? Do we know what guidance and assistance are available? Perhaps someone knows, but I do not. I'm a one-person department, and I have struggled to figure this out. Meanwhile, the past academic year was a waste of my time and my advisory board members' time as we tried to brainstorm ways to turn enrollment around. I'm sorry. I'm sure BOT will not be the last program you close. My hope is that future departments facing this dilemma will benefit from better communication, institutional support, and clearer processes as opposed to being ignored, criticized, and allowed to fail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leicher. The next registered speaker is Patrick Seagraves.
Hi, Patrick Seagraves. I'm here from Overland Park, Kansas. I'm very nervous, so I'll just do my best. I've never had to do something like this. I'm actually, I'm here on behalf of the student body. I've been doing a petition to acquire in Cav Central the currently unused formerly dining-down under room as a centralized club and organization space. It's in my opinion that that room is not being properly utilized to its fullest extent, and I know that, having been on this campus since 2017, that inclusive spaces are a very high priority for this campus and have been increasing very well. Currently, though, with the way clubs are set up, we're having to rely on a lot of classroom space that relies on changing schedules every semester, that could relocate class at our clubs and make it difficult to keep consistency. As well, I know that with increased enrollment, there is less classroom space available. We do have a lot of club space on the campus, but a lot of it is very large and not conducive to all club activity, such as the Colab, COM 83M Library, and COM 102 Conference Room, which are large spaces but are just not sort of fit for all sorts of clubs that we have. As well, it's not all very comfortable space. As someone on the autism spectrum disorder, I get very uncomfortable in like large spaces, spaces with a lot of windows, and I have a lot of people who have trauma or other difficulties that make it hard to be in those spaces as well. And as well, of the spaces we do have, some of them are very popular. Like, we have the poster symposium going on at the Colab right now, which I'm very happy that space is being used, but because of that, the Japanese club, for example, this week had to be relocated suddenly due to that. And so, that is consistency that is not there. But also, the library is sometimes used for movie showings, but that is, or just in clubs in general, that is disruptive to other students, which is also a similar thing. We have events in the Cav Central that disrupts the studying that happens down there. So, that is why I think that it would be important to have a centralized club space for those reasons. But also, it is, to my knowledge, a storm shelter, that room down there. So, I think it would be crucial to keep that storm shelter open for access to students in case of an emergency. I know that the bathrooms down there and other rooms are storm shelters, but they do not hold many people. And to my knowledge, I haven't been in that room for, I think, since 2018, but that can hold 30 to 50 people if I'm correct. And so, it would be important to keep that open instead of rolling it off or keeping it unavailable. For the room itself, I think it would be beneficial to set it up like how we have the student lounge currently that was renovated just down the hall. It would be a comfortable space for anyone to book. It would be a bookable space, reservable for clubs, organizations, and events that could have comfortable seating that we already have down there in Cav Central and possibly elsewhere on campus that is not being used. A TV could be provided for, you know, presentations, movies, but it would also, it would be a space too that could be set up for really anything. I think it would have high potential, especially to have potential like that in the winter when it gets cold and things can't be held outside. And so, with that said, I know clubs and organizations are a very important core tenet of this campus. I particularly get great enjoyment out of them, and I know a lot of other people do. I have 130 signatures on this petition from club leaders and students, and I also have the backing of the Student Senate, who are wishing to pursue this matter further to see it go through. And I will say, just as a student with learning disabilities, I've never felt more comfortable than on this campus. Like, it is important to me, and I think that any available space that can be utilized for students should be utilized for students so that we can continue enrollment retention because I know a lot of people retain their enrollment here because of the clubs, because it helps them get through school. And so, I think it's important to have that centralized space so that it can be easier and people can get together better.
Thank you. Your time is up, so thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Seagraves. Next up is, I'm sorry?
I didn't know if he should turn those signatures into someone.
Next up is Matthew Schmier.
Matthew Schmier, Overland Park, Kansas. I am a professor of English here at JCC, and I'm also the current Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee. And I want to give a little bit of background on what Cherie had just presented in her opportunity to speak to you today about the deactivation of the administrative assistant degree and its three related certificate programs. That's on page 36 of the current board packet, I believe. To the credit of the administration, these proposals were presented through the normal curriculum process. The program was identified as a target for deactivation through program review, and the proposals vetted and approved at the department and division levels before coming to Ed Affairs for a vote. However, as you just heard from Cherie herself, she made it known during the Ed Affairs meeting that she did not want to deactivate these programs. She spoke of her efforts to attract students, including pursuing external certifications to ensure workplace readiness. She also spoke to her advisory board's recommendations against deactivation. She made it clear that both her department and division curriculum committees were led to believe that these deactivations were a foregone conclusion given the administrative's decision, and that is why they voted to deactivate and were on the Ed Affairs agenda in the first place. During the meeting, Dr. Singh made it clear that he would bring these deactivations to the board regardless of the outcome of our vote. He urged us to look at the numbers presented in documents attached to the proposals to understand the administration's reasonings. And when we look at the numbers, it's true that the program has seen a significant decline in terms of overall declared majors, especially during and since the COVID-19 pandemic, when declared majors dropped below 100 students and awarded degrees and certificates dropped an alarming 62%. The global pandemic accounts for some of this change, as does a shift to work-from-home employment in the white-collar space. But the program's advisory board still sees a place for the degree and certificates this program offers, and as faculty, we take what our advisory boards suggest seriously. The administration also points to a jobs EQ report data analysis to justify deactivation, specifically the low entry-level pay and the fact that most employees in this field hold a four-year degree. To the first point, the entry-level salary in this report is presented as $44,900. Our United Community Services of Johnson County reported in April 2024 that the living wage in Johnson County for a single adult is $48,664, and for a family of four, it is $100,734. So, yes, the entry-level wage falls short. But as we just heard from the student, Eric, in the Student Spotlight, most programs on this campus do not just serve first-year college students seeking entry-level work. As a comprehensive community college, we serve students of all ages and education levels and family situations, looking to retain or gain new skills to advance in positions they already have or jobs they want to pursue. It's not unusual to meet students here with a four-year degree coming back in hopes of advancing in their current jobs. Looking at entry-level pay is a short-sighted benchmark that does not reveal the truth of our students' lives. Also, since I'm on the subject of money, I would note that the budget impact of these programs is nil, aside from marketing efforts and software the college already licenses. Unlike the cosmetology program that was deactivated last year, there's no need of a special facility costing thousands of dollars per workstation. The program has one full-time faculty member and a handful of adjuncts. Most of the courses in the degree and certificates are still going to be taught because they are elective in other programs in the Business Department. It makes sense to keep the degree and certificates if we're keeping the courses. Another argument faculty have heard is that Kbor, the Kansas Board of Regents, would not allow us to create or offer this degree or these certificates if we proposed them today, given the workforce analysis and the jobs EQ report. To that, I would say that deactivating a program on the basis of a hypothetical conjecture is folly. The program exists now and should be allowed to continue to exist until Kbor forces us to deactivate the program, much like it's doing with developmental education. We should not bend the knee and obey in advance of some directive that might never come. We have 22 voting members on Ed Affairs, two representatives from each of the 11 college divisions. Our bylaws state we need a three-force quorum or 17 members present to vote, and motions pass on a simple majority. 19 members were present when we voted. Five voted in favor of deactivation, 10 voted opposed, and four abstained. Even if those who abstained had voted in favor of the motion, that is, in favor of deactivating, the motion to deactivate these programs would have still failed.
Mr. Schmier, you'll need to wrap it up. I'm sorry, your five minutes is up.
That's it. In short, the faculty views the arguments the administration advances in favor of deactivation as hollow, and so voted in favor of keeping the degree and its three certificates in place. We urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmier. There are no more registered speakers for the Open Forum. Mr. Seagraves, just briefly, if you have a petition with signatures that you would like to leave at the back desk with the young lady back there, you're welcome to do that. Next up is our board reports, and we'll start with Logan Grigsby and the Student Senate report.
Good evening, Distinguished Board. It is a pleasure to be here with you guys tonight, as always. November has been a very wonderful month, very stressful. I luckily have continued to have all my hair, so can't be that stressful, but we're getting through it. So, so far, we've had another mid-semester election, and we've had two new senators, Angelina Silvian and Ms. Joy Singh. This brings up our Senate voting body to 19 senators and one Clear &amp; Connect liaison. We have approved two new budget requests. The Student Veteran Association has asked for a travel request to NatCon in the early spring of 2025. This will be leadership training for them. They do this every single year, and it helps build them, helps them be able to learn skills, knowledge on how they can help veterans. As stated earlier, we have a wonderful Veterans Association on campus that they're always looking to improve, so they always come back with much-needed skills, leaderships, training. So, this is a boon, not just for the SVA, but for the student body at large. Next, we have the Afro-Caribbean Association. We approved their funding for their Afro Fiesta, which will be Friday night, 11:22, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., and that will include games, dancing, they're going to have a DJ, they're going to have free African-Caribbean-inspired food. This event will be free for students or $10 for people coming from off-campus. It sounds like it's going to be a whole lot of fun, and I'm super excited. I intend to attend personally. We have approved a few new clubs. We have officially approved the volleyball club. This will be a step below our collegiate This will be a step below our collegiate volleyball team, but still kind of a competitive team, where it will kind of be in the middle ground there. If you are ever out at the courtyard, you're always going to see constantly 20, 30 people out there playing volleyball. So they officially wanted to start a club, which we are very, very happy about. They are going to play with other colleges in the regional area, Nebraska, Missouri, Kansas, and we are super proud and happy to see where they'll go. Next, the second club we just recently approved on Monday was the skeet shooting club. Now, there was a lot of nervousness, a lot of tumultuous on that vote, on whether we should approve a gun, quote-unquote, "gun" club on campus, but they ensured us that safety and gun education is going to be the most important thing. I'm a big believer in risk reduction and harm reduction, so I'm a big believer that teaching, teaching kids, teaching students how to safely and properly use firearms, especially in the country, in this country, is one of the most important things. Firearms deaths, statistically, one of the biggest causes of firearm deaths is misuse, not understanding of use, and things like that. So I am happy that we will be getting training to these mostly first-time gun users. Going from that, I will look at some of the fall highlights. We did have our Trick or Treat for Kids event that was last board meeting. I sure hope some of you guys got to make it out, but we hosted nearly 200 families from over the community, with over a dozen clubs coming to provide games, activities, candies, and so much more. So it was a wonderful event. We had our annual JCC Gives Market last Wednesday, the 13th. We raised nearly $700 through sale of baked goods, plants from the Horticultural Center on campus, and community-donated items. Donations for JCC Gives can still be made through JCC Get Involved, Sign Up Genius, and more. Future plans. Throughout, throughout winter break, we have scheduled a Student Senate Retreat for Tuesday, January 14th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Our focus for this will be leadership development, team bonding, and planning for the next semester. With that, I will yield my time to the Board for questions.
Thanks, Logan. As always, wonderful comments. Any questions or comments for Logan Grigsby? Trustee Smith-Everett.
I am going to ask about the skeet club. So, is skeet shooting the clay?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
So is it a real gun with bullets, or is it a gun with, like, darts or pellets or?
I believe it is a real gun with real bullets. I will immediately say, none of the guns will be on campus. They have a designated-
My next question you'd be.
They have a designated club. It's about five minutes up the road from campus, is what I'm told, but there will be no guns ever on campus. There will be training sessions held on campus, but there will never be guns held on campus. And I believe both of the advisors for the club are police officers who work in our local police department.
Logan, you should really look into being a lawyer, because you just went through all the questions that I was going to look to our legal counsel for on what our insurance policy was and where these guns would be on campus. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your thoroughness with that.
Absolutely, and lawyer is the goal for me, so thank you.
Hey, you got it. I can tell, I can see it.
Well, Logan, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Oh, yes, Trustee Ratan, so sorry.
I just want to continue to applaud you and the leaders in the college in having these clubs, where you talked about the skeet shooting and the Afro-Caribbean club in the same breath. And so, you know, and those circles may intersect. But, but I appreciate that, because as we always talk about, we want JCC to feel like it's a place where people belong, and there's all kinds of research that shows that these clubs and things like this keep people on campus longer and help with the graduation rates. So, thanks for being an enabler and a champion of that.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
Trustee Cross, did you have any questions?
Not really. I just, I don't think I've ever seen 30 people out there playing volleyball.
I have.
Really?
Yeah, there's a lot.
I would like to join them.
I'll get the music playing, and it can, actually, I'll be, I have a classroom, second floor, right across the street from it, and still I can hear them playing, shouting, and it's a really good ti, it's a really good time. I am not very physically able, so I don't typically join myself, but it does seem like a really good time, and not just that, but it seems like a really great way to make friends.
Where do you want to go to law school?
When or where?
Here.
UMKC is kind of the goal for now.
Sounds like a recommendation letter to me.
What's the law school?
Yeah, Trustee Cross and I are alums of UMKC School of Law, so there you go.
Very charming, Winter.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm in the air now, but I just want to say, I really appreciate Logan, your energy, your commitment, and your creative style in bringing our community of Johnson County Community College students together. So, I just applaud you.
Thank you, Trustee Jennings. You know, I, I think we focus on, obviously, we're here for the students, and we focus on academic success, but all of the things that you just talked about, and I'll echo some of the things Trustee Ratan just said, bring people together, provide a welcoming place. I'm really excited, actually, about the skeet club. As a former legend in my own mind, skeet shooter, you know, I'd be more than willing to come out and talk about the Four Cardinal Rules, right? So, but, but yeah, in that same, in that same conversation, we're talking about the Veterans Association, the Afro-Caribbean Student Association. How exciting to have all these wonderful organizations. And then, the work that the Student Senate does in helping fund what it is that these groups are able to do is so helpful in bringing people together and helping students achieve not only academic success, but personal and professional growth as well. And I really wanted to kind of shine a light on your Student Senate Retreat. What a great opportunity to bring future leaders together and have them spend a day together talking about how to be good leaders and developing those skills of collaboration, which, dare I say, is something we are sometimes missing in today's society when it comes to our governing bodies. And so, the ability for you to come together in an informal retreat like that and really engage in that sort of collaborative conversation, I think will be a tremendous asset to the Student Senate going forward. So kudos to you for bringing that together, the organization as a whole. I'm done now.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Logan.
Awesome. Thank you guys again for having me. You guys are awesome, as always.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And let me know when the skeet club's meeting. All right. Next up is our college lobbyist and Mr. Dick Carter. Well, the election's done.
Well, that was my opening line. I'll just continue to move through the report very quickly. Logan said that he had a busy month last month, but he hadn't lost any hair. Let's take a snapshot now and see what my hair looks like at the end of the session next year, and for comparison purposes. I've spent a lot of time over the past several months, sort of talking about the election and the campaigns and the way things were being handicapped by people who do what I do, talking to other folks involved in the political circles. And I've got to say that come election night, things turned out very differently than a lot of people thought that they were going to be like. Specifically, the focus was on Johnson County, and I think that's worth mentioning. That was a targeted area in an attempt to break up the supermajority in both the House and the Senate. Those results did not turn out that way. There were two seats that were targeted or focused on by the Democrats to win in Johnson County. They did not win those seats, and they ended up losing two other seats in Johnson County in addition to a seat lost in Reno County. That bumps up the majority in the House 88 to 37. It was previously 80, 85 to 40. It's hard to do math on the fly. In the Senate, similarly, Republicans picked up an additional two seats to increase the majority from 31 to nine. So those, those direct results will play out on how things move forward in the, in the session coming January 13th. That will drive the reality. And so some of the things that we'll be looking at are issues that come before the legislature will not likely survive any type of gubernatorial veto if that's of concern to us. We know that property tax, decreasing property tax, or figuring out how to answer the property tax questions is going to be one of the number-one priorities in the legislative session. And so, that's something to think about as, as this Board continues to plan for its future in the management of the college's resources. We know that we'll still be talking about issues related to government competition. There will be continued discussion on reducing the regulatory environment across the state, and how far that reaches into the local environs is something yet to be determined. But there's a plan coming from interim activity that's ongoing right now with committees that are meeting when the session's not, not in the regular session. Their full report will kind of drive what that proposal looks like during the legislative session. And then finally, the legislative-driven budget. That will be, that will probably be one of the other high-profile issues that we continue to work with throughout the, throughout the legislative session. I think add to that complexity, the consensus revenue estimate group, which just met and adjusted down expected revenues by about $72 million for fiscal year '25, '26, '27. So those are, those are all factors that go into how the policy conversations are going to unfold. You add into that then the additional factors that impact higher education, and for us, that's managing what that local budget looks like at the local mill levy. That all plays into how we view things. That's not necessarily how people in Topeka view things, and so that's, that's something that we need to be cognizant of moving forward. So what happens now, we'll focus on leadership elections. On December 2nd, the first Monday in December, all of the newly-elected legislators will travel to Topeka, and there's, there's a whole nother set of campaigning going on right now. I think, I think things will look pretty, pretty much the same at the very top. I think, I think we'll have the same Senate President, the same Speaker of the House, but I think we'll see some challenges in some nomination speeches and some, some highly contested races for Majority Leader, some of those down-later positions in leadership. We'll see how Johnson County plays out in those particular, in those particular seats, because that's where we find our ability to have some level of leadership, whether it's in the minority party or the majority party, from a South-central-driven-led legislature. That will take place, then, on December 2nd. We'll see the committee assignments then made sometime between then and the end of the year. And then finally, folks will convene in Topeka on January 13th for the start of the legislative session. So, so not unlike the Thanksgiving holiday, which then makes it a shorter time period between Thanksgiving and the Christmas holiday, we have a legislative session that starts on January 13th, which is also a little bit later in the month of January. It's still the second, second Monday of the month, but the way things fall, it just means we're starting a little bit later this year. So, that's kind of where things sit. In December, I'll come back and talk a little bit about what we anticipate, some of the, flesh out a little bit more what the, what the issues look like that we plan to, to face. We've got our Legislative Breakfast Series, Lunch Series, in line, and I think you'll probably be talking or hearing from Caitlin on that, as far as what your availability looks like. Those RSVPs are coming in well, and we look forward to having those conversations with the delegation that makes up Johnson County as they prepare to return to Topeka, or head to Topeka for the first time for some, in some cases. I think I would stop there. Hesitate to yield my time, like Logan said, because I have a feeling you'll, you'll make use of that time, but I'll do it anyhow and answer any questions that I'm able.
Thank you, Dick. Questions and comments for Mr. Carter? Nothing?
I hold them to sleep, or they're in awe, one of the two.
Well, yeah. I, I think we're all just kind of waiting. Like you, I was surprised by many things that happened during the election, not, not the least of which was the results of some of the local races. And so, I think we're just kind of waiting to see what that all means, when folks start heading off to Topeka and talking about what it is that's going to affect us and the broader state. So, maybe that's why there's no questions for you yet.
Very well could be. We, we're looking at it the same way.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Safe travels back to Topeka.
Thank you, Dick.
All right. Next up is College Counsel and Jason Arnett.
Back in the day, I was really good at Nintendo Duck Hunt, which is not skeet shooting, but there you go. I'm going to keep it short, because we had a short meeting this month. Ever since Dr. Korb arrived, we've had some very short meetings in College Council of late, so yay.
It's not my fault.
No, you're getting the credit. So, we did meet last Wednesday. We got some updates on the success of Some Enchanted Evening, which I'm sure we'll hear about. And then, this spring, Academic Branch is implementing their regular substantive interaction tool, the RSI tool I talked a little bit about last month, that they've been piloting for six months, I think, a year, almost? Something like that. We heard about that. We heard about the, the issues around developmental education and co-requisite support, which I'm sure you'll hear more about here in a little bit, and how that affects instructors and some other support areas around campus. And then, we cut our meeting short because Barry Bailey and I have been presenting on our communication report. So far, we've been to Cabinet and Staff Council, and then last week, we went to the management topics and talked to managers and sort of gave some high-level overviews of the report that's coming out. We're going to, we've gotten some really great feedback on that. We're incorporating some of it. We have a new draft as of yesterday. That's not substantively changed, but it's a little more clear in what we were asking, what we're looking for. We're going to go to Academic Branch Council first week of December, talk to them, get their feedback, and then we'll present on that in January at PLD. And then, next month, just kind of looking forward, we're, we're going to actively start exploring how communications happen between the various shared governance bodies and make sure that there's a standard of how things move from one body to the other. So, that's everything I have for you tonight.
Thanks, Jason. Questions, comments for Jason? Trustee Jennings, I haven't forgotten that you're up there.
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm listening. I'm watching.
Thank you, as always, Jason, for your report, and thank you, too, for staying the course with this sort of collaborative communication process and, and sort of procedure that you've been working on so hardly, so hard, so. So thank you very much. Until next month.
Thank you very much. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
You as well. Next up is the Faculty Association, and Andrea Vu. I feel like we haven't heard from you in a while.
That's okay. I think that's okay, at least, though. So hello, my name is Andrea Vu, and I am the President of the JCC Faculty Association. I, I'd like to thank our VP, Dr. Irene Olivares, for doing the report last month, because your meeting fell on my birthday, and I had dinner plans, so I was not able to be here. I want to start tonight's remarks with a shout-out to the foundation, the JCC Foundation, and the wonderful work they did organizing that Some Enchanted Evening event. The Faculty Association is always happy to support our students by participating in the event. We also very much enjoyed seeing you and all of the folks that came out from, like, from around the area who are passionate about our college and our students. One of the huge highlights for us was the, the program and celebration of Jill and Carl Gerlock, who were this year's Johnson County Ins of the Year. So hearing directly from them about all the work they've done in the community in terms of advancing public education and public community colleges was really outstanding. It was particularly, we were particularly delighted to hear the story about the history of public community colleges in this region, and then the way in which Mrs. Gerlock's family helped with the development of this specific college. And so, I think that the overall thing that, that we came away with was the selection of the Gerlock family and the Gerlocks themselves was just such a spot-on selection in terms of the Johnson County Ins of the Year, like, what great people. Upon reflecting on the event and preparation for these remarks, I was reminded about how grateful I am to be situated within a college and community that values public education and supports public education. Johnson County is really such a unique place filled with a diversity of people and perspectives, but one thing I think is nice about this place is that we can all come together for the benefit of our students and to ensure that our students have access to the opportunities that this college provides. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, JCC- I've said it before and I'll say it again, JCCC is truly one of the best, if not the best, community college in the nation, and that would not be possible without the support of our community. So thank you to the foundation and the community for coming together in support of our college and our students. The role and value of community colleges in higher education is unmatched. We exist to transform lives and strengthen communities. That work includes our College Now and Dual Enrollment Programs, which support our K-12 partners and students by enabling our high schools, local high school students, to get an associate's degree at the same time that they're getting their high school diploma, meaning that they are more career-ready quicker. And so that's a huge advantage for our students. It also includes all the career and transfer programs available to all who wish to take courses at our college. In transfer programs, we're serving as a bridge between high school and our four-year partners to make sure that we introduce and prepare students to the rigors of college coursework. In our career programs, we're working hard to build and bolster our relationships with state and industry partners to address workforce needs and adapt to changes in technology and business environments. We also support local industries with our continuing education programs so that folks who are already in their careers can brush up on critical skills. Community colleges are the drivers of state and local economic development. As such, we should be included in the decision-making about higher education in this state. And by "we," I mean community partners and stakeholders, administrators, students, and faculty. It seems all too often that students and faculty are left out of these conversations. Yet, the faculty are the ones on the ground, working with the students every day to support their retention and success. The students are the ones whose educational progress is impacted by the decisions made by policymakers. As we look to face the challenges of the 21st century, let's keep in mind that the people working with students day in and day out are the ones who are best informed about what works and what doesn't. We are there to support our students regardless of what may come. It would be neat if we were, in the very least, consulted. Regarding some of the proposed and expected changes looming on the horizon, one thing to keep in mind as we adapt to these decisions being made, the impact our students and our faculty, is that people are not cogs in a machine. They are human beings. Bureaucratic models often omit the human element and fail to recognize the unintended consequences of omitting the human element. Sorry, between departments, to, to do that, we actually have to recognize that moves between departments need or require careful cultivation, planning, support, and communication. And sometimes when we are falling short on those, on the cultivation, or the planning, or the communication, then we're faced with challenges that we probably didn't need to be faced with had we actually, like, planned for the, these foreseeable consequences. One thing I do love about our college is everyone's commitment to our students. Certainly, I see this every day amongst the faculty, but I also see it in the staff administration and the community. So one particular program of note is, of course, the Course-Based Undergraduate Research Experiences, or CURES, Symposium, which was yesterday and then, of course, earlier today as well. In the collab, CURE courses integrate original research projects and STEM classes so that students can have access to real-world research experiences without having to take an additional class or pay additional fees for, like, an independent study. Said differently, these courses make our college more inclusive by creating greater access and opportunities for all of our students. The development of CURES courses is supported by an NSF grant that was awarded to Doctors Melanie Harvey and Heather Seitz with assistance from our grants office. And this year, they were able to expand the number of faculty participating by providing support to build CURES into more JCCC classes. Yesterday and today, our students presented their research projects in a poster symposium. The symposium was attended by faculty, staff, administration. I know some of the trustees also were present, and, as well as community partners. It, it allows students to explain their research to, like, normal people. So how do we communicate scientific research to someone that doesn't really know a lot about science? And that's one of the, the great benefits of these programs for our students. So thank you all, to all the faculty who are part of the CURES project, and of course, thank you to Doctors Harvey and Seitz and the grants office for making these, these programs possible. I also want to thank the college for its support of employees, and which this happens in various ways. A particular relevance to tonight's meeting is the faculty sabbatical opportunity that you, is in your Board Packet, in which faculty are able to spend a semester working on a research project that benefits the college and the students and, you know, the workings of the college. You can, of course, see all the wardies in the Board Packet. I'm not gonna read them off. But what you'll notice is that we have a lot of faculty doing a lot of different, interesting and valuable work with these sabbatical projects. So thank you for your support of our faculty and their sabbatical opportunities. Finally, and I did email this to you, to the trustees, I do want to reiterate that you are invited to the Faculty Association's Holiday Luncheon, December 9th, in Cap Fed A and B, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Please come and say hello to the faculty and help us celebrate the end of another successful semester. It's gonna be Taco Bar, so there you go. And that's it.
Thanks, Andrea. Any questions or comments for Andrea? Trustee Ratan.
I did visit the CURES, and I'm always impressed with the students that are there presenting. And I talked to one group, and I think one person was a traditional student, two people were nurses, and gosh, the other one had a very non-traditional job, which I can't remember, sorry. But it was just even cool to see this four-person team, and they're all in three different areas and parts of life. So, and presenting very good information. They had done a research about the water runoff and the wild grasses, and whether that cleans the water adequately as it goes through all the drains. So even stuff that applies to our college. So I'm always impressed with the students that I talk to. They're always ready and willing to break it down into layman's terms.
I just want to say, I think you're highlighting a wonderful thing about community colleges as well, which is the diversity of students that we get.
Yeah.
We have people that are, that are in their careers and are coming back for some additional training, or we have people that are first time in college, or, you know. So there's just, high schoolers, I have high schoolers in my class. So like, the, the broad range of what we have here is really also one of the huge assets that community colleges bring to the higher education sphere, or whatever.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Smith Everett?
I would just say thank you. Thank you for your thoroughness. There were a lot of topics. I won't, we won't go down all the rabbit holes tonight, but thank you for always bringing your unique perspective and giving us broad perspective from the day-to-day. And I hope you have a good holiday break.
Thank you. It's always wonderful hearing from you, and there are a lot of things on which we agree, many of which you said tonight. I hope that members of our community were listening to you about the value of community colleges. One of the things that we can certainly agree on is that this institution is one of the, if not the, best community colleges in the nation. And that's because of the faculty, the administration, the students. We definitely agree on that. I think we also agree on the way in which the community college serves our students in a myriad of aspects, from high schoolers trying to figure out what it is they want to study and get a head start to transition students. One of the things that I found myself thinking, though, as you were talking about that, is we often talk about how our transitional students come here as a way of getting prepared for the rigors of going on to a four-year institution. Gosh, I think we need to remember as well that they come here because they are getting a better education here than if they were starting at a four-year institution. I absolutely believe that. Our classes are smaller, our faculty is, is absolutely top-notch, and they're afforded with opportunities like the poster symposium that Trustee Ratan was just talking about that they often would never get to experience as a freshman or sophomore on a large university where they're just getting lost. And so, gosh, thanks for the great shout-out for our institution, Andrea. It's always wonderful hearing from you, and...
I am a product of this institution, so...
There you go.
There we go.
And as with Trustee Smith Everett, happy holidays over Thanksgiving, and we'll see you in December.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Next up is the Johnson County Education Research Triangle and Trustee Smith Everett.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. J-Cert met for our second meeting since I started on the Board last month at KU Edwards, on the KU Edwards campus for several hours. And just as a reminder, J-Cert is a sales tax that was begun, I think, they said 13 years ago, or in 2013. I apologize, I don't have those details. And our, our role is oversight on the Board. And so we are looking over KU Edwards, KU Med, that is right in the, it's like, right before you cross the state line in Johnson County, and then the K-State Olathe. So the J-Cert received $2.2 million in sales tax in October and distributed $748,000 to each of these three university entities for a total of $7,076,000 distributed year to date. As a reminder, we, there's generally been the last couple of years about $8 million distributed between those institutions. And we will be meeting again in April, and I think that concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments for Trustee Smith Everett? You know, J-Cert is one of those things, I remember when we, when J-Cert was formed and we became a part of that, a success story, truly a success story of bringing educational institutions together and really engaging collaborative. I, I have a theme here tonight. It's called collaboration. You're hearing that word a lot. So thank you for your report. Next up is the KACC report, which I have to consistently remind myself is no longer KACC-T, and Trustee Cross.
We did not meet, Madam Chair. The next meeting will be held on December 6th and 7th at Leveque Community College in Parsons. And I regret, on account of my son's birthday party, I will not be able to go.
I will be there.
Breaking news.
You'll be carrying the torch for us. All right.
I thank you. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Cross. Parsons, Kansas, you said?
It's a great place.
Yeah, actually it is. All right. Next up is the Foundation Report. Trustee Hamel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some Enchanted Evening was held on November 9th. It was a great success. Foundation raised a record amount, integrating many students of the JCC program, had incredible student speakers, and overall, a great time was held by all. Lots of new aspects were changed to the event and seemed very well-received. Save the date for the 2025 Some Enchanted Evening of November 8th. JCC has been selected to host the Kansas Advancement Professional Conference in the summer of '25. JCC Foundation is thrilled for the opportunity to showcase all that JCC has to offer to our colleagues across the state. The Cohen Community Series tickets will go on sale on October 28th. We are thrilled to host Lee Bryce as a performer this year. We are excited, expecting a sold-out crowd and a special VIP experience prior to the concert. The concert will be held on March 1st. And new this year, there will be sponsorship opportunities to help ensure events exceed income from our past events. Fox 4 has agreed to be a media sponsor for the event, which means the Cohen Series will get a lot of airtime on their morning shows and promote the concert the week of the event. And they're also gonna provide an anchor as an emcee and coverage of the concert that evening. This is gonna be a great way to bring attention to the benefits concert, the history of the event, and the impact it will make on our students and programs. The Foundation received a new $15,000 donation from a private donor to help support the performing arts. The Kennedy Center. JCC Foundation will partner with the Newman Museum and the JCC Fashion Design and Merchandise Department for a unique fundraiser on May 10th, "A Match Made in Heaven." Brings together contemporary artist Catherine Bernhardt from St. Louis, Missouri, and American fashion designer Jeremy Scott from Kansas City, Missouri. Both are known for their creative work and engages the themes of consumer and popular culture and humor, creating a dynamic pop culture extravaganza. This fundraising event will transport participants into a vibrant pop culture through food, fashion, and art. This event will be at the Newman, Newman Museum...
Nerman?
Oh, the, the Nerman Museum, sorry. Proceeds, will support the Nerman Museum operations and art education activities and the JCC Historical Fashion Collection. Save the date, don't miss that event. Announcing Sipson Scholarship, co-chairs are Cindy Green and Tracy Osborne-Ultian. Event will be held on June 26, 25, at the Wiley Hospitality Culinary Academy. Stay tuned for more details. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Do I remember correctly, so you mentioned that the Foundation raised a record amount. The number sticking in my mind is 1.4 million. Do I have that right?
1.14.
1.14. I was missing a digit. 1.14. I knew it was well over a million.
Yes.
$1.14 million, absolutely amazing. And Andrea was talking earlier about memorable events. I just want to throw this out there. The dancing of the lead singer. I'm gonna leave it at that. Draw from that what you'd like. I also really enjoyed listening to the Gerlachs and their story. Of particular note was you didn't hear either one of those absolutely amazing people say anything about themselves. It was all about the people around them and the community. It was absolutely an amazing experience. And lastly, from me, what better chairs, co-chairs than Cindy Green and Tracy Osborne-Ultian for the Sipson and scholarships? Can't wait for that. Any questions or comments for Trustee Hamel? Yes, Trustee Smith Everett?
Well, it's, it's really about the gala, and I just want to do a shout-out. Incredible kudos to Joy Ginsburg and our amazing team on the Foundation. What I have noticed, the shift I have noticed since Joy has joined us is, and I told her this, and I just want to say publicly, is really bringing the college to the gala. I owe, the gala has been well-loved for many years because it's been an incredible event in itself. But a little bit of distance between that and, like, the feeling of the community college and all the things we do. And you walk in, and there, she has just done so many very purposeful things to have what we do and the artifacts of what our students have done there and present for people who know about the event and, you know, know about the college but maybe haven't been on the college campus for a while. And I think it's incredible, and it just says so much about Joy's purposefulness in everything that she does and her team making that happen. So, thank you so much. That's...
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
And I have, if I can from the ceiling, I have another comment, and I agree 100%. Trustee Smith Everett, it was an amazing evening, and I just wanted to do a shout-out, not only to Joy, but also to her ability to really bring in several, several departments of students who did some amazing work, and then also even brought in Shawnee Mission North students. So it was, it was an amazing evening. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? It was an amazing event, to be sure. It always is, but you make a good point. I do feel like now, when I walk into that event, it's about JCCC, and for several years, that was missing a bit. So kudos to, to Joy and her team for doing that. All right. That brings us to our committee reports and recommendations. First up is Audit Committee. I was in the midst of a jury trial, and so Trustee Smith Everett carried the torch at the Audit Committee meeting and has our report.
Okay. So the Audit Committee met in this very room at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, November 7th. Those present are in your Board Packet, included many people in this room, as well as Emily Kramer from Rubin Brown LLP, who were here for a presentation on their audit report. Sorry, I need to include Chester because I know he's in there. Sorry, that's what I get for skipping around. Chester Moyer, Audit Partner, Corey Robinson, Audit Manager, and Emily Kammer from Rubin Brown. Chester Moyer, Partner, and Corey Robinson from Rubin Brown presented the draft annual financial statement report to this, to our committee for the year end June 30th, 2024. Mr. Moyer informed the committee that the college is expected to receive an unmodified opinion, which means there was nothing found, and that's always good for an audit report. And the committee made the following recommendations that I will now bring forward as a motion. It is a recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the Audit and Advisory Services to approve the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2024. year ended June 30th, 2024, and I will make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Ratan, seconds. Any discussion about the audit report? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. You may continue.
Thank you. Jeff Johnson, our new Director of Audit and Advisory Services, who I did see this evening here in the audience, presented the information on the activities of the last quarter. As some of you know, we've had quite a bit of change in the audit, on our audit team, and so we are grateful for Jeff taking the lead on getting several of these things taken care of. He highlighted the progress made on the Ethics Report Line modifications and enhancements project and shared the next steps in the process. He also shared observations on the ACUA Annual Conference. Mr. Johnson shared an update of the status of prior audit recommendations. He noted that six of the 14 recommendations from the Payroll Process Design Effectiveness Assessment have been implemented. And he also gave us an update on the Ethics Report Line, which is that between July 22nd, 2024, and October 28th, 2024, six reports were received via the Ethics Report Line. Four were received anonymously, and as of October 28th, five of the reports have been reviewed, addressed, and closed. One report was still in process, which I believe you even said was coming to a close that week. Is that correct? Okay. For the same period, 29 reports were received via HR channels, 25 have been reviewed, addressed, and closed, and four are in process. Mr. Johnson presented an overview of the new internal audit standards. He highlighted the purpose of internal auditing and outlined the relationship and expectations of the Director of Audit and Advisory Services and the Board to establish the internal audit function position independently and oversee its performance. He also provided the committee with an update on the department's implementation of the standard. So, the cliff notes on that is that in order for an audit to be considered independent, they need to have a direct line to us on the Board of Trustees. And so, we, some of the, it should be here in the rest of our, I can't remember if it was in our, it's in this Packet. All the packets blend together at this point in the month, where you will see that there's a nice dotted line directly to us. So, if there were ever any financial concerns, Jeff and his department could come and report to us on what those were. He would not have to go through what typical employees might go through of hierarchy of management. Annually, the Audit Committee reviews the Internal Audit Charter. This practice is consistent with the guidance provided by the Institute of Internal Auditors, Global Internal Audit Standards 6.2. And as a result of that review, the committee has made the following recommendations, which I'm bringing forward tonight. It is a recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the Audit and Advisory Services to approve the proposed audit charter as shown in your Board Packet, and I will make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Smith Everett, a second by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion about the multi-page document in the Board Packet? Hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to review that. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. You may continue.
Thank you. Finally, the Annual Audit Committee reviews the Internal Audit Plan. This practice is consistent with the guidance provided by the Institute of Internal Auditors, the Global Internal Audit Standards 9.4. Mr. Johnson reviewed the internal audit assessment process used to develop the proposed internal audit plan. Using the results of the assessment, the following areas are proposed for the internal audit plan: information, technology, general controls, procurement, enrollment management, and ethics point evaluation, which is actually already a current special project. And I believe that that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments for Trustee Smith Everett before we move on? All right. Thank you for your report. Next up is the Board Governance Committee Report, and Trustee Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board Governance Committee met in this room at 10:45 AM on Wednesday, November the 6th. Kelsey Nazar led the review of the following policies. The first one is the appropriately yet redundantly named Policy on Policies. That's Policy 111. And the second one was the Professional Development Policy, which is Policy 113. The Board Governance Committee did not propose changes to these policies. The Board Governance Committee was given the opportunity to evaluate board processes but did not propose any evaluation on any of the processes at this point. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that. The Policy on Policies always just gives me pause.
I'll have you know, Trustee Musa and I went round and round on what to name that, and that is where it landed.
That is where you landed.
Reviewed by the Department of Redundancy Department.
There you go. The Department of Redundancy Department. All right. Any questions or comments for Trustee Mitchell? All right. Thank you for your report. Appreciate that. Next up is the Collegial Steering Committee and Trustee Smith Everett. And once again, carrying the torch for me because I was occupied elsewhere. So, thank you for.
I apologize. I, we don't have notes on that because we don't really take notes. This, I did not look this far down my agenda. I covered my regular topics. We had a robust conversation at our last committee meeting about communication, and that concludes my report.
You know, I do empathize with you because last month, when I had to give the report, I said, "Where are my notes?" We depend tremendously on those around us to help us remember what has happened at the various meetings. So, but thank you for your report. And certainly, it echoes what we heard from Jason Arnett about this sort of ongoing communication, collaboration process. So, thank you for that. Next up is the Management and Finance Committee Report, and Trustee Mitchell, we're back to you.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. The Management and Finance Committee met in this room at 8:30 AM on Wednesday, November 6th, 2024. The information related to this meeting can be found on pages 13 through 16 in the Board Packet. The Management and Finance Committee received the following reports from staff. Continuing Education and Workforce Development Report. Lisa Waldman, Vice President, Workforce Development and Continuing Education, and Jessica Johnson, Executive Director, Workforce Development and Continuing Education, presented information from the 2023-2024 Workforce Development and Continuing Education Annual Report. The presentation included an overview of department activities, operations, programming, employee engagement, community services, and financial results. It's an excellent report. There should be copies available to everybody if they ask for them. The 25-26 Budget Update. Megan Casey, Interim Vice President, Chief Financial Officer, provided an update on the fiscal year 2025-26 budget development process. The update included the college's stated budget priorities, calendar of events, and a preliminary estimate of incremental general fund revenue and expenses. Ms. Casey reviewed the guideline, the guiding principles for tuition and fees that are considered by the administration in recommending tuition and fee rates each year, along with JCC's historical tuition rates and comparisons of other two-year and four-year institutions. As a reminder, the recommendation on budget guidelines, including proposed tuition and fee rates for 2025-26, will be brought forward in the December Board Meeting for consideration and approval. Other agreements. Rachel Lear, Executive VP of Finance and Administration, presented the renewal of the college's Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Overland Park related to the JCC Police Department, which updates terminology and establishes guidelines for mutual aid, jurisdiction, and scope of powers. Details can be found on page 30 of the Consent Agenda portion of the November 2021-24 Board Packet. Capital acquisitions and improvements. Tom Hall, Associate VP of Campus Services and Facility Planning, provided the committee with information on facilities, projects, from the capital acquisitions and improvements matrix. Mr. Hall reported that engagement has begun with BNIM on the facility's master plan. The Management and Finance Committee has the following recommendations to present this evening. Procurement Reports and Recommendations. Jim Fikert, Executive Director, Procurement Services, reviewed two bid recommendations. Libert Unit Replacement in the Rayner Center Building Data Center. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the bid from Fagan Company in the amount of $447,034, with an additional 10% contingency of $44,703 to allow for possible unforeseen costs. The total amount would be $491,737, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Cross?
Aye.
Thank you for that. Any discussion? Trustee Smith Everett?
I just wanted to put Trustee Mitchell on the spot and see if you could explain what a 20-ton glycol LIBER unit was.
I'm glad you asked because that was going to be my question as well.
It's a chiller to cool the data center.
I kind of figured, but I just wanted to test you.
Keeps the computers cold.
Yep, yep. Prevents them from overheating.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. You may continue.
Okay. The Student Center Electrical Switchgear Replacement. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the bid from Alpha Energy and Electric in the amount of $470,076, with an additional 10% contingency of $47,008 to allow for possible unforeseen costs. The total amount is $517,084. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Cross. Any discussion? I would just comment briefly that if you've, if you've looked in your Board Packet, for those of you who do that sort of thing outside of the members of the Board, both of these recommendations are the low bid. And so, the folks who work to, to do this for us here on campus, Tom and his team, do a great job of evaluating things and making sure we're getting the best bang for our buck. So, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. You may continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for that. Next up, Student Success Committee, and Trustee Ratan.
Thank you very much. Our committee met at 10:45 on Wednes, 10:45 AM on Wednesday, November the 7th, here in GB 137. We received an athletics update from Tony Tompkins, the Director of Athletics. He discussed the athletic programs at JCC. If you didn't know, we compete in the National Junior College Athletic Association, NJCAA, and we have 200 student athletes and managers, and we compete in seven sports and one club team. For the 2023-2024 season, 84% of our athletes earned a 3.0 or higher, with 34 students earning a 4.0. Great news. JCC has a winning tradition and has had over 1,000 NJCAA All-Americans. Students also volunteer in the community. JCC has entered a partnership with Open Doors as part of the Name, Image, Likeness, also known as NIL Initiative. We also got a College Now update from Mallory Mitchell, the Program Director of College Now. She provided an overview of the National Alliance of Concurrent Enrollment Partnerships, NACEP, accredited College Now program since its inception in 1984, highlighting the growth from eight school, eight high schools, 10 course offerings, and 287 students to 20 high schools, 20, sorry, 20 high schools, 77 unique courses, and 4,302 students. So, growth. Olathe, Shawnee Mission, and Blue Valley School Districts have the highest enrollment, and these College Now instructors must have or be working towards the same credentials as JCC faculty. Next, Sheila Mopin talked about affiliation agreements, specifically one that can be found on page 30 of the Board Packet. We got curriculum updates from Valerie Mann. She presented new courses, course modifications, course deactivations, and program modifications that are effective for the 2025-2026 academic year. Gurbeshon Singh presented one administrative program deactivation effective for the 2025-2026 academic year. Dr. Singh noted that the Educational Affairs Committee voted no on the recommendation. Complete details can be found on page 34 through 36 of the Board Packet. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that, Trustee Ratan. Any questions or comments for Trustee Ratan? I just wanted to, you don't have any questions?
I don't.
All right.
I know.
I just wanted to make an observation that I had no idea that the College Now program was 40 years old. But, but what a success that program has been and the growth that it's achieved, and certainly, that's a testament to everyone who has kind of stayed the course to try to get our high schools more involved with that, with that type of programming. So, kudos to all of the faculty members and administrators who have been involved in that. What a great success story. And with that, we'll move on. Next up is the President's Recommendation for Action, and first is the Treasurer's Report, and Trustee Hamel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board Packet includes the Treasurer's Report for the month ending September 30th of '24. Some items of note include the ad valorem tax distribution of $5,450,292 was received from the County Treasurer during September. During September, the college made a scheduled principal and interest payment on the Series 2017 Certificates of Participation in the amount of $3,013,799. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ending September 30th of 2024, subject to audit. I so move.
Motion by Trustee Hamel, second. Seconded by Trustee Cross. Any discussion on the Treasurer's Report? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. You may continue.
That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for that. Next, we'll turn to Dr. Judy Corp, and let's hear your monthly report to the Board.
Well, okay. We've already heard about Some Enchanted Evening, but it's really difficult to not talk about it because it was an amazing event. And I just want to highlight a couple of things that haven't already, well, a couple of things that have been said, which were, it was great to celebrate Carl and Jill Gerlock. That was so fun. And we did raise over a million dollars. And so, that, that is also very cool. But I would just like to thank, there's no way, it's impossible to thank everybody that played a part in this, but there were so many of our JCC staff and students that contributed to the overall success of the event. Different departments on campus that participated and sent students, came to the event. It was, it was great participation. But I also want to give a special thank you to Olivia McInnery and Jacob Rose, our students who gave their inspiring stories at the event. It's like you hear those stories and you remember, that's why we're here. And so, it was great that they took their time to do that. Also, I'd like to thank the Some Enchanted Evening Committee. They were, that was led by our co-chairs, Ashley Sherard and Stephanie Meyer, because they put a whole lot of work into the front end of this to make it just an amazing evening for everybody. So, I wanted to just publicly say those, those few little thank yous, but. The next thing in my report is just a brief update on enrollment. So, our fall credit enrollment obviously is pretty stable now. We know that we were at about five, a little over 5%. We will see just a little bit more enrollment, but that has to do with our winter room session. So, whatever comes in, in winter room, we'll adjust that a little bit, but that's, that's pretty much our, our number for fall. Spring credit enrollment numbers are in there. You see, right now, it's 9.2, but that is a very early number, and we really can't draw conclusions from that number yet. It'll be a little bit before we really see what we think our actual spring enrollment is. But I just wanted to let you know where it is at this point. The only other thing that I wanted to mention tonight is, you know, a few months ago, we talked about creating a bridge plan for our strategic plan, and I just wanted you to know that we have been working on that. Our goal teams that already existed for the strategic plan that we're currently on, they have been working very diligently to finish up action steps from the current plan that we're on that we know will end on June 30th. But at the same time, they have been going back through, looking at the bridge plan and looking at what do we need to be looking forward to for the next couple of years. So, they're doing that simultaneously right now. And so, we are planning for Cabinet to review the draft so far. Those teams have been working on it, but Cabinet will review that draft of just the overall plan. on it, but Cabinet will review that draft of just the overall plan on December 3rd. And so then, we'll keep moving forward with it. Our goal is to really be able to present something at Professional Learning Days in January that, well, it's not the completed plan, obviously, because next steps also involve getting input from the campus community, but we want to have something that we would be able to at least share, even if it's in draft form at PLD. So, we've been working on that, I didn't want you to think we forgot about it, because we didn't. The other thing I will just remind you is that in your Packet of Materials, you have the monthly campus report to the Board, and there's just so much in there about what goes on at the college every single month. So, take a minute to look at that when you have a chance. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that. Gosh, we can't say enough about Some Enchanted Evening, that's for sure.
I know.
What an amazing event for our students and for all those who showed up to celebrate. None of us thought that you had forgotten about the bridge plan.
Oh, good.
Because, none of us will ever forget about the bridge plan, and we can't say it now without sort of having a little chuckle.
I don't know why.
So, the bridge plan will go down in infamy.
We have been working on it, and it's not funny. It's just, it's serious work.
All right, it is serious work, for sure. And it's one of those, you had to be there kind of things to understand why we chuckle when we hear the word "bridge plan."
I know.
In any event, thank you for your report, as always, great to hear about the wonderful things that are going on. Next up is new business, and we do have one item of new business that I wanted to talk about, that is the selection of our nominating committee for the Board. Every year, this time of year pursuant to Board policy, a nominating committee is selected with the responsibility of deciding the slate of officers for the coming calendar year on the Board of Trustees. The responsibility falls on the Board Chair to identify and select who those members of the nominating committee will be, subject to Board approval. And so, I took the opportunity after considerable thought to reach out to Trustees Mitchell and Ratan and ask them to comprise that nominating committee. I think they'll do a fabulous job. Trustee Ratan has served on the committee before, and I think they'll do a tremendous job. Their task then will be to bring to the Board at next month's meeting for vote their proposed slate of officers. And are the committee assignments coming at the same time? That's right. And the committee assignments, so that we can move into the new year with everybody knowing what it is that they're going to do. As most of you are probably aware, officers on the Board are limited to a two-year timeframe for their service in that role as an officer, but certainly, that's not a requirement, it's not a two-year term, as it were. So, we'll look forward to hearing what Trustee Mitchell and Ratan decide. But with that, I would like to make a recommendation for the Board, and that is to appoint Trustees Greg Mitchell and Don Ratan to serve as the 2024 Nominating Committee, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Smith-Evert, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, by the way, for accepting that charge, and we'll look forward to hearing from you next month, and I anticipate that you'll be in touch with most of us to kind of talk about committee assignments and things of that nature, so. Next on the agenda is old business. I'm not aware of any old business, and so, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an opportunity for the Board to take up in a single motion items of a fairly routine nature, and before we take that vote, we always offer an opportunity to pull any items from the consent agenda. I am actually going to request that we pull the curriculum portion of the consent agenda, which is contained in pages 35 through 36 of your Board Packet, for further discussion and separate vote. Are there any other portions of the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda minus the curriculum portion contained on pages 34 through 36. Do I have a motion?
Second motion.
Trustee Ratan makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Smith-Evert, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the following portions of the curriculum part of the consent agenda. The portions that I would like to approve separately are found on pages 34 and 35 of the Board Packet, and that is new courses, course modifications, course deactivations, and program modifications. This motion will not include the section of the curriculum agenda that is titled Administrative Program Deactivations. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the following portions of the curriculum part of the consent agenda. New courses, course modifications, course deactivations, and program modifications, do I have a motion? Have a motion by Trustee Hamel, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Mitchell, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. That leaves us with a motion to approve the Administrative Program Deactivation portion of the curriculum piece of the consent agenda. We need to have a motion and a second, and then we'll have an opportunity for discussion. So, do I have a motion to approve the Administrative Program Deactivations contained on page 36 of your Board Packet?
So move.
I have a motion by Trustee Hamel, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Smith-Evert, any discussion? Trustee Ratan, you're first.
I would just like to hear the process to close out a section or a major. How does that happen? I know that we have talked about with cosmetology, it's building a building, and how much that costs, and it's cost prohibitive. I see that there's a five-year decline of 62%, so I get that. So, is there a policy on how the decisions are made, and where does Ed Affairs come in? I guess, can you walk me through the visual flow chart?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Dr. Corp to respond to that. Okay, so the process would start with our academic program review process, which all of our programs, all of our academic programs go through that review every three years. If everything's great and there aren't any, nothing is noted, then they don't come up again for another three years. If there are any concerns or even just changes that need to be made, then the program can go into what we call a revitalization stage. And in revitalization, any number of things can happen depending upon what we think is needed for the program. So, that process, in that particular process, then programs are typically reviewed every year. So, goals are set or things are changed, and then the program is reviewed. And either it meets the goals that were set, and then it goes back into that three-year process of review, or in some cases, if it doesn't meet those goals, or we decide, you know, it's not going to move forward, then it would go through the process of discontinuing the program. So, we've had these conversations recently because we aren't sure that we ever had the event happen that recently happened where we had a recommendation come through, and it didn't go through, or didn't pass in Ed Affairs. But typically, what would happen is the programs go to Ed Affairs to be considered, there is a vote from Ed Affairs on whether or not they support the recommendation or not. In this case, administration is recommending that the program be discontinued, it went through the discussion in Ed Affairs, Ed Affairs voted to not support the recommendation to have it be discontinued. So, we discussed the Ed Affairs leadership, and a few of us met to discuss what exactly is the process, because I looked at the bylaws for Ed Affairs, we don't really have a policy that outlines this or a written procedure necessarily for this particular happening. So, we talked about it, and we said, no, the process would be then to move it forward to the Board with the understanding and the information that administration is recommending it for specific reasons due to decline in the program and the demand in the industry and that type of thing, and that Ed Affairs did not vote to move it forward. But ultimately, that decision lies with the Board of Trustees, so with the information that you have, then you have the authority to make the, to vote on the recommendation. Does that answer your question, Don?
Yes. I have a second question is, since the courses still remain, but the major doesn't remain, does a certificate go away as well?
Yes.
Okay.
That is the recommendation.
Can I ask a follow-up to that, Trustee Ratan, before you continue with your next question? One of the comments that I've heard, that I'm hoping you can address is, well, if we're going to have the courses anyway, why don't we just keep the degree or the certificate program? Can you explain, what's the reasoning behind deactivating the program if we're still going to have the courses, because I'm confident there's some reason for that?
So, I'm, you tell me if I don't get this right, Dr. Singh, all right? But, many of the courses that are offered in the program are also offered in other areas. So, the course, many of the courses will still be available to students, but they won't be available as a degree or a certificate. But, it's because those, many of those courses are offered in other areas. In addition to that, some of the courses that are offered in the program could be offered as electives if students chose to take those, but they wouldn't be part of a whole degree program or certificate program.
So, are there courses within the program that will not be offered?
Yes.
And I think the crux of my question, Gurb, is this, what's the merit in doing away with the program if we're keeping the courses, and that's what I'd like for you to address?
So, my name is Gurbeshan Singh, Vice President, Chief Academic Officer here at Johnson County Community College. So, we will not be keeping the courses after three years. So, according to Higher Learning Commission, anytime we deactivate a program, we have to give the students 150% of the time. So, in this case, since we have a degree, which is two-year long, so we have to make sure the students have three years to complete that, the students that are already in the program. So, we have to keep the certificates, degrees and whatnot, and the courses for that time. So, once the students have completed and we're not taking any new students, then we can sunset all of the courses and the degrees and the certificates. So, the courses I think we're talking about are the ones under the BOT prefix. So, that's the distinction. So, the courses that are under the BOT, Business Office Technology prefix, will go away, but like the English, Comp One, some of the other courses will stay, because those are courses also part of other degrees. Those courses are under other prefixes.
Okay, that answers my question.
All right, continuation on that one. Are any of the classes going to be renamed to a different department and kind of have a similar class, or are those completely going to go away completely?
In this case, I would say probably not. I mean, that is something we're going to have to see over the next two to three years. I mean, if there are some courses that have enrollment, or just random students are taking those courses, we may keep those, but many of those courses will not be kept, because many of those courses are, like for example, how to type and things like that, or how to do, how to learn office equipment, so those courses will go with the program.
So, sorry, continuation. I know when I took my associate's degree here, some of their classes were BOT that I was required to take for my accounting degree, and those are not included in accounting now, is that correct, or not any other degrees?
I believe none of the other degrees or certificates have BOT as the courses, they're part of them.
Okay, and I apologize, Trustee Ratan, back to you, it was just kind of a natural segue, so.
That is a great question, because, yeah, it was like, if they are still here, it's almost like getting a minor, like, I got this degree, but I have a certification in Business Office Technology, that's kind of the path I was thinking. And then, I just wanted to hear, what was the vote from Ed Affairs again? I didn't get those numbers.
I, I.
Five in favor of deactivation, 10 opposed to deactivation, and four abstained.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That is it.
Okay. Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not quite certain what's going on here, but I do have a few questions. When did this program come under review? Was it first in 2017?
I think the first time this program came under review was way back when the college started the ZBB program. I think this was back in 2011 or '12. So, it was back then when this was, this was a program, along with some others, who was put into the quadrant to be deactivated. But then, back in, I think, 2017, and then also back in '21, so there were efforts made to bring the program back, but then with a lot of other factors, for example, when we talked about the salaries, and then also, according to Kansas Board of Regents and some of the, and the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the students or the people that are looking for these jobs don't require a degree or certificate, all they need is a high school diploma. So, if you keep that in mind, then any of our students taking any of our courses or certificates or degrees would qualify for this anyway, qualify to actually get a job in this field anyway.
I understand. But people are upset, and so, I'm just working to understand, like, we're going to transition the full-time faculty member into another department, is that the plan?
So, for the next, it depends, like, how long does it take? So, we have to give the students three years, so the faculty, we talked about it, they have three years to complete all those students. But sometimes, what happens is that some of the students may change their major, so they don't want to be doing Business Office Technology anymore, let's say they want to go into cybersecurity, or they just want to do an AAA. So, it's possible that it does not take us three years to sunset this program, it takes us two, one and a half, or whatnot. So, what would happen is, what we have talked to Professor Liker about is that as she needs load, that she needs more classes to make her load of 15, we'll look at some of the other areas, like she's taught in business before, so we can give her some of those courses, we got plenty. And then, she's also taught in CSS, and then we'll give her some courses there, so that way she will have her load as long as she need to keep that load.
So, we're going to work to transition her into another department? That's what's happening?
So, for the first two to three years, she'll stay in business.
I wasn't really listening to everything you said, I just wanted to come back to the question I asked, because I wasn't sure I heard it answered. So, it's a yes or no, we're going to transition her into another department?
Her load will be transitioned into other departments, but she can.
As we wind down this program?
Yeah.
She still has duties there.
Right.
Okay. And then?
Then her load, like her teaching load, so she has to teach 15 hours, and that's all she wants to teach. So, if she is short, let's say she's teaching some of the BOT students, and she's got six hours there, but she still needs nine more hours, so we'll give her some courses from business or CSS, which is another discipline, so she can have her 15 hours. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. So, what have we, so some of this is just uncertain at this point.
Well, it, I mean, it's.
I understand the reason for the anxiety and the animosity, and I had a friend and mentor one time tell me, like, you're a decent enough lawyer, Lee, I just wish I could take you to charm school. So, I'm saying that because I feel like there's some people in this room that need to hear that. So, I'm trying to understand what the hollow blue is about and just do my job providing citizen oversight.
Right. Right. So, I, I mean, there is a, a level of uncertainty, but what we do know is that we have one full-time faculty member. We know that we have the ability to realign her workload with other courses. And we have committed to having her involved in the conversations as it, as we go forward. But it's, because there is some uncertainty, you can't really just say this is exactly what's going to happen because we have to do the teach-out for BOT and get that finished up. But as the, as it shifts, we already know that there is load in CSS or there's load in business. And so, we're not concerned about that part. But I understand her anxiety because there's not, like, a plan that, that says this is exactly what's going to happen.
But generally, it'll be CSS that she'll go to?
Uh, it depends on. CSS and business.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, a couple of the things, not to belabor the point, but that's the general plan, right? Oh, oh, oh. I've been accused of not properly supporting adjunct faculty in this place in my role here. So, we're losing, how many adjunct faculty?
I don't know how many. We will be losing adjunct faculty in my department. Agreed.
So, what will happen to them? They're gone.
They won't have classes, right?
They will not have classes to teach.
Okay. I don't want the accusation I wasn't paying attention here. All right. So, this is just an ongoing situation. We're deactivating this program while we'll be working to, to transition Professor Leicher to CSS or even somewhere else?
Business.
Okay, business.
Because she's already, Higher Learning Commission qualified to teach both of those places.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Ratan.
Kind of three comments. One is, it's just interesting that you say someone from high school can do this, but then the big, long report that I read said that most people actually working in the industry have four-year degrees. So, it's just, it's just a big difference of what you read, but what is also said that you can do at high school, but what's actually in industry is four-year degrees. So, it almost leapfrogs the two-year degree. It's either, it's two extremes. And then I just personally feel like typing has been lost, or typing resourcing could be a course, but not necessarily a, a degree. I'm not saying it's a degree. And then I wish for the Student Success Committee, I wish there was some on-the-bubble list or pipeline list of things at risk because it, it, it does sometimes feel like it's, you hear about it over the course of a couple of meetings and then we're voting. And so, even like, hey, a year from now, this is on the bubble, or what programs are in revitalization right now? That's the kind of stuff I'd love to hear in Student Success, just so I know and I get a heads up. And, and things will end, and time does change, and things evolve. So, I get it that there aren't as many people majoring in what probably used to be called, like, secretarial or administrative work, but just a longer lead time just from us as a trustees would be appreciated. So, that's, that's my comments.
Yeah. So, thank you for saying that because we're already working on that process. We heard you, and we heard Trustee Smith-Ever too. So, starting next year, we are going to show you at least once a year, so at, once the program reviews are completed on the academic side. So, there are the vitality reports that are done for each program. So, at the end of the year, or sometime in May or June, when the, we will share with you the vitality report summaries.
Very good.
Because if we share with you everything, that's, we, I don't think we can do that. That's what I heard from Michael Brooks. But we can share with you the summary so you can see where every, each program is.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Cross.
I'm glad to hear that. I thank Trustee Ratan for her comment. I think she's Chair of the Student Success Committee, so she could request, as she just did, to have that brought forth because it would be, just be nice to know, to take the temperature, see what's going on. Any given day, you all know I don't want to know everything, but I, when, when, when things are brought to us, then we're left to deal with it. And then, I know you guys feel like you're caught, or it's a game of gotcha, but we don't do what you do. We don't do this day-to-day. And like, I just wish from time to time, you'd pass things off with a little spoon of sugar, so.
So, understood. Starting next year, in May or June, it depends on how the cycle goes, you will see, you will get a report from us every year.
I'd just like to add, I don't know if this, I don't know if this is a cause of this issue we're currently discussing, but there was a time when a board member attended Ed Affairs committee meetings. And that stopped because there was just, I mean, we're talking about, like, you know, amending, you know, lesson plans and stuff like that. And so, then it went to the current model, and I feel like there's a happy medium between the two. I don't think it was ever an intentional, let's exclude the board from this, we just need to find where that happy medium is. Because I remember sitting through those Ed Affairs committee meetings, and gosh, I, it's not like I didn't, I minded being there, but there was a lot of stuff being discussed that certainly the board didn't need to be involved in, so.
Esoteric.
And I will say, I have been invited to the Ed Affairs meeting. It just hasn't worked for my calendar in the last couple of months, but I have been invited to.
Well, there was an appointed liaison at one time. It wasn't just a, if you want to show up. It was somebody who, on the board who was tasked with attending. So, I just think we need to find that, that happy medium.
Agreed.
Trustee Smith-Ever.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have lots of thoughts and therefore have several comments. Beginning with, I do not like this part of the role. No one tells you when you get elected that this part of the role will keep popping up. It is not my favorite. I do not enjoy it. It is difficult. I applaud people that have the courage to come and speak to us and email us. As that is, they're right. It is your livelihood. It is your career. And I completely understand anytime a group is advocating for themselves and for keeping something that they poured their heart and soul into. So, I, I want Professor Leicher to know that from myself on this board, that we appreciate all that you did to create and develop this program. Of course, that comes with a caveat, that we are a community college, and a community college, unlike many other institutions, are more sensitive and have to adapt much more and be more flexible to the community and the needs of the community. And as needs change, we have to change our programs. And so, I fear, I don't fear, I know now, after five years on this board, that this will keep coming up and this will keep happening because that is frankly the role of a community college. Our programs are going to grow and some are going to go away as the times change, and that is simply part of the work. That is what we do. At the last JASert meeting, there are some programs, they have been propping up for years, that are so expensive, I cannot believe that the community supports them with tax dollars when they've got six students in them. And we just are not in a place at JCC where we can do that endlessly and then offer all the other programs and excellent faculty. I talked to Dr. Korb about this quite a bit. We were joking about the policy on policies, but it's going to come back up. Little did you know. The Board Policy 110 is one that when we were creating the Board Governance, we went over and Greg Musel and I wanted to do a lot of changes to it. And our legal team said, well, there's not a lot you can do to it because it's from state statute. So, I would bring your attention to number four of the Board Responsibilities Policy 110. And that says that part of the role of the Board of Trustees is to determine the educational program of the college. My understanding and interpretation, and I believe this has been passed by Ms. Nazar, is that that means that it is in the purview of this board to decide the educational programming. It is not in the jurisdiction of our faculty. And while I hate to say that because I am a teacher and the programs that I have, I never want to go away, and I understand that, it is not the job of the person teaching to decide what's taught at the college. It's the job of the board in consultation with the administration and K-BOR to be in charge of what educational programs we offer at the college. The reason that I bring that up is because it concerns me that this process of going through Ed Affairs gives a false notion that a decision can be made in Ed Affairs, when in fact, according to the way I've read the policies and the state statute, I believe that that is only in, within the jurisdiction of this board. And so, I don't want to keep running things through Ed Affairs that they ultimately don't have the power to, and then we get hopes up and we get people believing that there's a decision there that can affect things. And I think it is on the board and the administration to fix the clarity on that. I think we've got to get really clear about what role each party has. And if I am wrong, I want to be corrected, and I want to know what, where that line is. But I do believe, from my understanding, that it is only the decision of the Board of Trustees to vote on programs. The curriculum and academic freedom is within the purview of the faculty and is not part of our jurisdiction. So, we've got to be really clear on that. They get to decide how to teach those programs in coordination with K-BOR and the requirements and certification. As Dr. Singh said, I have been very vocal on this board, that I want a clear process. I want a clear process. I do not like surprises, and I do not like receiving emails and being unarmed, not being equipped with what the other side is. Dr. Korb, I really appreciate you going through every level of our questions, being very thorough, walking us through the program's history. We did not get that in some previous rounds of program changes, and I really could feel that you were doing everything you could to give us the full picture. And that is really appreciated, and it's also set the standard for me on what I expect every time we have a programmatic change because we have got to be given all the information to make the right decision. And they're always going to be uncomfortable. They're never going to be easy because these are people's careers and lives, and I understand that and respect that. So, I apologize for the long-winded, but I, I do not like that this keeps coming up, that we feel surprised. And to be frank, Dr. Singh, it's got to be more than once a year because we are, we are living our lives and have our own careers, and frankly, we need a lot of redundancy to be reminded. This is why the budget process is 12 months of ye, a year, because we can't retain it from month to month. So, Rachel Lear's knows, you got to bring a little bit of it every month. So, I would like it to be brought up multiple times a year and be predictable and reliable what information we're going to get at each juncture in the year and how, when it's going to come up again, and then get updates as we go. Because I think it's critical to us making the right decisions. So, that concludes my comments. Sorry, I had, I had a lot, a lot of thoughts.
May I, may I just say, we did hear you, and we are working on a process.
I felt that.
No, but we are because we agree. The communication could be more clear. We, we need to look at the whole thing. So, we, we are doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, spot-on in, in many ways. I have, I have a few things to say, and I guess the first thing I would say is, to me, this process has never really been confusing. Now, maybe I saw clarity where clarity doesn't exist, but in my mind, these situations, the administration makes a recommendation, and then Ed Affairs weighs in on their recommendation. What we have here is the administration recommending that the program be withdrawn, and the Ed Affairs disagreeing with that and saying, no, we don't, we don't think it should be. I don't recall that ever happening before, which is why this feels very familiar, unfamiliar. But to Trustee Smith-Ever's point, that's why we vote as a board. Typically, the administration and Ed Affairs are aligned, so the vote is easy, right? Because everyone's telling us the same thing. This is the first time I'm aware of where the administration is, is, is making one recommendation and Ed Affairs is making another recommendation, which is why it feels different to us. That said, I think it's a great idea for us to have some sort of information about programs that are tagged for revitalization that potentially could evolve into a program elimination. Now, some programs are tagged for revitalization. It just means that they're going to be changed in some way, and there's really no consideration at that point that they're going to be done away with. But, but if there's any, any possibility, I do think that it would be nice to know when that happens, what those programs are. I then feel like, because like you, I reached out and tried to get as much information as I could, I, I resent the phrase sad, familiar narrative. Maybe it's not my place to resent that. I don't think this is a sad, familiar narrative. I think this is a unique situation that we've never confronted before in this particular context. Having said that, there's a disconnect in some of the information that I thought I understood. And so, the first thing I wanted to, to kind of ask you about, Dr. Korb, and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
That's fine.
But I heard during the open forum that this really started with COVID, which was in 2020, the pandemic, this kind of decline in enrollment. But the statistics that I have, or the data that I have, show a steady and pronounced decline since 2014. Is the data that I have correct?
That is the data that is our information on the program. I mean, that is our tracking of the program. I, conversation about this program started pre-COVID, then COVID, COVID derailed everything, and so there was a bit of a pause. I, it certainly didn't help anything, but the decline started prior to COVID.
Okay. So, that partially answers my next question, which is, am I correct, and I believe Dr. Singh mentioned this, this program was tagged for revitalization in 2017?
Do you think, well, 2012 was, it was originally talked about, I think, in 2012. So, but then 2017 is when it actually went through the program review process and started revitalization.
Okay. One of the other things that I heard during the open forum that I think there's a disconnect on in my mind is that no help was given to this program, unlike other programs, with respect to marketing or whatever needs to be done to try to increase enrollment, that, that there was no, no helping hand, I believe was the phrase that was given. If a program's tagged for revitalization, I guess it would be my expectation that that would be part of what's happening. Was there, was there marketing efforts made over the course of the years since 2017 with respect to this specific program? Can you speak to that? And again, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yes. So, yes, and I, I think part of that disconnect has to do with timing.
Okay.
Of whether or not things have happened recently, now that this decision is upon us. So, back into 2017, yes, around that time, and I don't have the exact dates, but when it went into revitalization, there were marketing efforts that were put in place for this program and included things like looking at the website and the, I don't know exactly what you call it, but the word optimization so that the search, you know, when people put things in, so there.
SEO.
That's it. That's it. And so, I know that they did that. They also did, yeah, good job. They also created a video. So, they created a promotional video for the program. It was highlighted on the website. There were brochures created and, and posters and that kind of thing for advertising. And some specific audiences were even kind of targeted in some of that marketing. That happened, I believe, back, like, maybe pre-COVID. And so. And so then COVID happens, things kind of, you know, don't necessarily move along the way they would have had we not had that lapse. And then it was picked up again. And I don't know that there have been additional marketing efforts since then, but some of those things are still in place with regard to the changes that were on the website. And so when people search for it, it, it should be there.
So if I understand you correctly, there were some things that were done, some initiatives that were undertaken back in between 2017 and 2020. Those initiatives are still in place, but maybe nothing new happened after that.
That would be my, yes.
And I, and I would also add, you know, Professor Leicher underwent a, a process where she streamlined the, the program to make it more accessible and easier to understand for students. She lessened the number of available certificates and try, and tried to focus on more appropriate, more appropriate field-specific jobs that seemed to be of interest to people. So there was also time taken and work done to attempt to redesign the program so that it was more effective and efficient for students and what was more palatable for them to be able to take, take out into the field. So that work was done as well.
Yes. Chris, you look like a man with something to say.
He can speak to the marketing much better.
Say it's a unicorn.
Is it Chris Gray?
Sorry.
Chris Gray, Vice President, Marketing Communications. Just to expand a little bit on Dr. Korb. I can't speak prior to 2017 when I was, was not here, but starting in 2021 and actually continuing through even last year, extensive efforts were put forth on this program. I met with Dr. Leichert as well as the dean, as well as Dr. McLeod to a sense get approval to spend not only money capital, but also human capital beyond what normal is for most programs. Digital efforts were provided, print ads were provided. We even called out specific programs on programs that men should consider for, I think it was medical office technology. All through COVID, actually during COVID, efforts were expanded on the digital forefront as far as keywords, as far as optimization, as far as digital ads. Some of this information was provided to Professor Leichert as well as there just wasn't volume out there. And that was part of the reason why I spoke with Dr. McLeod because of the extensive spending, not just volume coming to our website, but within the region of students searching for certain words related to this program. So I say in full confidence, what marketing support was provided was extensive, expansive and appropriate for the need at that point in time.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chris. I don't know. I mean, anecdotally, I, I share responsibility for hiring administrative assistants for our law firm. We do not have a degree requirement. We do not have a certificate requirement. And to the best of my knowledge, none of our current administrative assistants in our office here in Kansas City have a certificate or a degree. Might it be better? Maybe. But sometimes it's the realities of the market and the evolving marketplace. And I, I think that's one of the things that, that you were touching on a bit, Trustee Smith Everett. To come upon us then to look at all those factors. And, and when I look at this data, I see a program that has declining enrollment year over year for a period of 10 years. And it has ultimately gone from 272, I'm looking at unduplicated unique headcount, 272 to 81. You know, that's significant. And, and we have an economy that we need to serve. We have a student body that we need to serve and we have to make the difficult decisions. And, and that's hard. And I know that it's emotional. Hey, listen, I was on faculty. I was the co-chair of my program. I get it. But, but sometimes those decisions have to be made and I don't know what decision we're going to make tonight. We haven't voted yet. But those decisions are never easy for us when we're taking something off the board. But our hope is that when we take something off the board, we get something on the board that we can offer that's more applicable to our student population and the needs of the economic marketplace. So that's what we strive for. Do we always get it perfect? Probably not. But that's our hope. So with that, any other discussion? Trustee Smith Everett.
I had one follow-up question to the discussion we just had was, the cosmetology program brought through Ed Affairs?
At the time, it was not. It was discussed and, and brought directly to you at the behest of, of Dr. Bow.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve. And now I'm going to have to dig through my documents here.
We're in the middle of a.
I'm sorry?
We're in the middle of a motion right now.
Oh, we are in the middle of a motion. You're right. Thank you, Trustee Cross. On the table is a motion and a second to approve the administrative program deactivations listed on page 36 of the board packet. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, everyone who participated in that robust discussion. That's what makes things work. So I thank everybody for doing that. We do not, to the best of my knowledge, have an executive session unless our general counsel tells me otherwise. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm moved. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion made by Trustee Smith Everett, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.